I'd like to call the meeting order. I'd like, it's my duty to announce that we held an executive session prior to this meeting at 6:30 PM. To discuss personnel and legal issues. Please stand and see to the question.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Kozlar.
Here.
Mr. Laser.
Here.
Mr. Licassio.
Here.
Mrs. Maines.
Here.
Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Obarto.
Here.
Mr. Palmer. Dr. George.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to put forward hearing of visitors, part one, as you where you may stand, announce your name, your address, and speak of anything that is on the agenda for this evening.
Before we start with the hearing of visitors, either part one or part two, just would like to say, I believe there's a number of people particularly on part two that want to be heard tonight. In the past, when we only had one to two speakers, we have five minute limit and I'm notoriously soft. I keep the clock and I let everybody run by the limit and try and let everybody finish up. But tonight, just so that we can have you heard, I'd like to just explain a couple of ground rules. Number one, it is a public comment, so if you have questions for the board, we're not going to do a back and forth during your time speaking. I'm going to ask the board to wait, let everybody finish. If questions are asked or concerns given, then the board can address those tonight immediately while the speaker's still there, if they are able to and if they choose. And obviously administrators can also address that. But that being said, I'm going to cut everybody off at five minutes. Usually I kind of let you go on to finish and some people go on for two or three minutes. I don't want that tonight, so at four minutes and 30 seconds, I'm just going to give you a little thumbs up. Which means four minutes and 30 seconds. And at five minutes, I'm going to interrupt you and just say, you know, at 5:01, I'm just going to please tell me your time's up and ask everybody to proceed. Thank you.
Just to reiterate, Mr. Nagels, there is a hearing of visitors, part two, which you may speak of anything, any concern that you have, and that will be amended. I'd just like to move for adoption resolution number...
Judge, Judge, you want us to?
No, you're okay. Rick, you have your level 43, ready to drive, like, drove yet? Um, a couple of questions. You guys are going to hire a construction attorney tonight, and you have the bull in the price ranging from $135 to $375 an hour. Are we really going to?
You mean that? You can see I'm snogging.
I see you. One of the rules is under supposed to be off, you know?
You're right.
It's fine.
You're right.
That's the five minutes.
Mr. Hume, for the first time in our long and steeped relationship, you're absolutely right.
First time, yeah. First time tonight. I hope we can laugh like this. I hope we can laugh like this at the end of the...
Well, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Nah, you're fine. So anyway, you guys are going to hire this construction attorney, and you have the bull in the price range between $135 and $375 an hour. Is that...I mean, I've had attorneys a few times in my lives for things and they give me a higher rate, and that's what the rate goes. That's a big open window that I would venture to think it's always going to be on the $375 side. And my question, my other question is, at this point in time, why did we need to hire this construction attorney if everything's been going great at the school? And my other question is, this far into building LES, how do we just discover now that we need a grinder pump? For that school? Did it flood? And that's when we realized the sewage lines were running the wrong way? And that's a pretty, like... I'm not a construction person, but I think that's a pretty simple thing to do. And I can't believe that, you know, this far in, we just found out now that we have sewage issues. So those are my questions. Thanks.
Mr. Hume, if you don't mind, I'll address your questions in inverse order. The grinder pump will be explained at the time of motion, and, you know, the questions you have will be answered. As far as the attorney, let's start with the question of why we need an attorney for construction. Right now, we don't know for sure that we're going to need the attorney. We want to have the attorney retained. He has given us some advice on a couple of nerves, but he's not actively involved in any day-to-day work at the school. But for issues that may arise, the construction projects at schools are so complicated and the construction law is so specialized and very, very complicated and difficult. And I am not a specialist in it. I handle a lot of the, I handle a lot of the work that's being done, but I'm not a specialist in the construction documents and construction locations. We don't know if we'll come to that, but we thought that prudence at this point, early on, was a smarter course. As to fees, the fees for the partner is the higher fee that you quoted. There's a lower fee for an associate and there's a lower fee for a locker. So the idea being it depends on who's doing the work as to what the fee will be. Hopefully, things will continue to move apace and we won't be into large fees. That, of course, remains to be seen, but so far, things seem to be going well and we really haven't had the need for extensive consultation yet with the construction attorney. You know, I would say that in Westmoreland County, the average divorce attorney charges anywhere from $175 to $275 an hour. My standard fee, if I was doing work separate from the department of school district, for which I charge $135 an hour for copying a mileage, is generally between $300 and $400 an hour because of my experience. So the fee itself is certainly high, but that is a fairly standard fee for that specialized area of service. Okay, thank you. Sure.
Anyone else? Saying no one? Remove for adoption resolution number 16, approval of minutes?
Ten minutes.
We have motion on the floor in a second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion passes. So, Stuart.
As we just discussed, I recommend that you move on to resolution number 17, the approval of letter of engagement of legal services with Alan Torrens and McGee retaining a chill count in their district. By the way, I didn't say Mr. Hume, but the individual that we're retaining is Alan Torrens. He's a partner there. An excellent lawyer. I dealt with him on a construction project in another school district. He's been extremely competent, reputable, and he also comes as a recommendation of one of our board members who also was in construction. So one never knows, but we've had really good experiences with him in the past. Like, he's very good and...
Stuart. Second.
Motion on the floor in a second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion passes. Education planning, Mr. Nagels.
Thank you. We're going to begin with a presentation by Mrs. Stewart from Bagley about the Bagley Elementary School Girls on the Run.
Thank you very much. This year, 20 girls from Bagley Elementary School participated in a program called Girls on the Run. The program was led by three dedicated coaches, Melissa Wisneski, a teacher at Bagley, Lynn Scolies, a parent, and Caroline Cascarella, who's an extended day substitute teacher. Over the course of those 10 weeks, these coaches dedicated 40 hours of their time serving as positive and caring role models, leading the girls through lessons that foster the development of essential life skills to help them navigate their worlds as well as establish a lifetime appreciation for health and fitness. I would like to introduce to you Melissa Wisneski and some of our members of Girls on the Run.
I am Melissa Wisneski. I'm your grade teacher at Bagley, and I'd like to thank you for giving us your time so that we can share with you something that means so much to us. As Mrs. Stewart had explained, Caroline Cascarella, she has done many long-term subs with the district. She was one of my fellow coaches. And Lynn Scolies, who's a parent at Bagley as well. And you will hear from them as well throughout the presentation. So what is Girls on the Run? It is a 501 nonprofit organization dedicated to encourage pre-teamed girls to develop self-respect, healthy lifestyles, and teach life skills through dynamic, interactive lessons, running games, and a 5K at the end. It is taught by certified Girls on the Run coaches and includes three parts: understanding themselves, value in relationships, teamwork, understanding how we connect and shape the world at large. The Girls on the Run at Bagley started, I was approached by Lynn Scolies, who knew that I loved running. And this is my first year teaching third grade. So she approached me and she knew of the program through a friend who had also, her daughter had also been part of it, and saw how valuable it was. So she approached me and asked if it was something that I would be interested in trying to get started with in Bagley. So I researched it and looked into it and found that it was just something that I wasn't willing to walk away from. So we talked with Mr. Prempa and Mrs. Swaggart, and they too agreed that it was a program that will benefit our third, fourth, and fifth grade girls. So we made Bagley a site and we established the coaches. We went through training, multiple trainings at McGee, where their council is. And we were certified in CPR and first aid training. We had a night, or a parent night for the parents that were interested, a question night. We had a couple sessions throughout the school day, encouraging girls to be a part of it. And then we waited for the registration process, which was all done for Girls on the Run. So I'm going to ask you a couple questions. This is kind of how I started the initial meetings with the girls. Raise your hand if you enjoy making new friends. Raise your hand if you enjoy playing games or being silly. Raise your hand if you enjoy, if you like to talk about things that are important to you, things like friendship, goal setting, things that make you unique. We all do, and these are things that you will experience through Girls on the Run. We have a brief video.
I used to be a participant in Girls on the Run. And now, out of college, I'm coaching and I just love it. Girls on the Run is really important for girls. I think it helps them with building their confidence and building positive self-image and positive ways to deal with situations.
I didn't realize how much of a well-being, emotional side of it that they were teaching girls. We're learning so many different ways to open up conversations with our daughters. And it's so neat because she wants to have these mom chat sessions at night now. And so, you know, before bed, we just continue that talk and it's been so wonderful for our bond and our relationship.
Girls on the Run makes me feel good and makes me feel like an express person.
It helps you build confidence in yourself. The coaches are right behind you saying, "Come on, come on, you can do it."
I love that you get a group of girls coming in from the very beginning. They're so diverse, and by the end of the season, those girls are a complete team.
My favorite memory of Girls on the Run, I think, is seeing one of my girls from my first team cross the finish line. She made it Girls on the Run. She had a lot going on in her life. I remember being at the finish line when they crossed that line and her face was just like, "Oh, I did this amazing thing."
Girls need to know that they have a voice in this world. And I think with Girls on the Run, it encourages and it finds girls and it helps girls to understand that they are important and because of that, they can make a positive difference in this world.
So the Goter mission, or Girls on the Run mission, is to inspire girls to be joyful, healthy, and confident using fun experience-based curriculum, which creatively integrates running. So Girls on the Run helps girls to recognize that inner strength that they have within them and to celebrate what makes them unique. And they do this through various games and running-based activities. Their vision is to envision a world where every girl knows and activates her limitless potential and is free to boldly pursue her dreams. Girls on the Run, I watched my girls become fearless because they were surrounded by people that they respected, cared for them, and they trusted. They believed that they could achieve anything and that there was nothing that would pull them back from becoming what they believe is beautiful and a strong individual. Girls on the Run has core values that the program is based upon, and I'm going to briefly go through those with you. One is to recognize our power and responsibility and to be intentional in our decision-making. This is a very big one throughout the program and it's weighed heavily in the curriculum. It is a, the girls learn about the importance of decision-making and how to successfully navigate through life by being responsible and intentional in all the decisions that they make. It teaches them to embrace differences and find strength in our connectedness. It talks about embracing those differences and celebrating them. It also talks about how to use their similarities and connectedness with their friends to build relationship and meaningful friendships. To express joy and optimism and gratitude through our words, thoughts, and actions. It talks a lot about being positive and encouraging others as well. There is one common theme that we use a lot throughout the program. It's called star power. And we tell the girls that any negative situations in their life are like a cloud that cover their star and their star cannot shine through. So Girls on the Run teaches the girls strategies to utilize when this cloud comes through or these negative experiences come through. And with these strategies, they're able to move the cloud away and let the stars shine through. So their star shines and they can move forward and look through a positive outlook. Nurture physical, emotional, and spiritual health. Girls on the Run stresses the importance of parent for themselves in all aspects of their life. Lead with an open heart and assume positive intent. This is one of my favorites because it talks about the importance of being true to yourself and being free-spirited and doing what you believe and that everything is okay. The other thing I want to mention is all these pictures within here, that was last season. Those are our girls. Stand up for ourselves and others. Girls on the Run helps girls understand that it's important to stand up for others and they teach them strategies to do it effectively. Girls on the Run helps girls celebrate every girl's beautiful. We all have a different meaning of the idea of what beauty is. My beautiful is different from what your beautiful is. Your beautiful is different from the person sitting beside you. And Girls on the Run encourages girls to embrace their own unique beautiful as well as being accepting of what other people believe is beautiful. It teaches girls to be proud of who they are and every day, girls can celebrate their own idea of beautiful. I'm going to pass it over to Caroline, but before I go, I do have to say that not only did I walk away and reflect from this season looking at these 20 beautiful girls that just soared and, you know, use their star power and grew and just use this as such a positive experience, but I also have 20 beautiful little girls that have affected my heart and will hold a special place always.
Hi, as Melissa said, I'm Caroline Cascarella. When I heard Melissa and when we wanted to do Girls on the Run at Bagley, I knew I'm going to be a part of it. I taught in North Carolina prior to coming to Bagley and I was a coach there. And that was the first season I ever experienced Girls on the Run. So I knew I needed to be a part of it again. So I'm going to talk about a little bit of what Girls on the Run looked like at Bagley and what our curriculum looked like. So our team was consisted of 20 girls. That was the maximum of our Girls on the Run team with three coaches. They were all in groups three through five, and we met every Tuesday and Thursday at PBS. The girls were dismissed from their rooms and they are meeting places in our gym. While they were changing and getting ready for our practice, John Eagle provided gift cards to our team where we were able to purchase snacks for the girls to have before we got started for the day. It was 10-week session, or 10-week season, and we started in March and ended in May with our final 5K at Heartwood Acres, where parents, family, friends were all encouraged to come and celebrate the accomplishments the girls had, whether they were running alongside the girls or if they were just in our cheering section, which we had a ton of. I remember running through that 5K and I would just hear, "Go, Coach," or "Bagley's awesome," like, just, and it really got you through that run because it was a difficult course. So we attended trainings, as Melissa stated, to learn how to implement the Girls on the Run curriculum. It was provided to us each lesson and we were able to practice a lesson with experienced coaches and the head of the council, showing that we were able to effectively implement everything. Each lesson contained a theme, which we have listed on, up on the slides there. And so the lessons we'd go through, you'd have your introduction where you told the girls what our theme was, whether it was connection, star power, beautiful emotions. And then you had a warm-up activity, which kind of brought the girls starting to think about what that star power meant or what beautiful meant. And through that warm-up, we did silly games. We talked, we, and just enjoyed. It wasn't very heavy into the lesson yet. Then we did our actual activity, which was where we really discussed those topics, discussed our theme for that evening. And while we set a goal for our running, and this is where we did the biggest running portion. So every practice, the girls would need to set lap goals and work towards that during this activity portion. And during the running, the coaches were encouraged to connect with each girl and talk about more in depth and on a personal level with the girls, whether that, what that lesson is going through for them. And then we ended up with our wrap-up, which is where we just, again, as a team, collectively came back, reflected on what we learned, how we've applied it into our situations at school, at home, and just how we're able to use those strategies that we talked about in our everyday life. And then at the very end, which is my most favorite part, we awarded every, or one girl per practice, an energy award. And that award was given to the girl who really demonstrated the core values that Goter wants, or somebody who just went above and beyond and just blew us away. And the energy award is like a silly little dance or a chant that we all do as a team and we look silly, but it sends everybody home with a smile. And my personal favorite is the no-haw. Do you guys remember that one? So my, and Melissa kind of touched upon this, my favorite lesson, we introduced it in week three, was star power. And again, it was to talk about those negative themes that were going on and we needed to activate our star power and push the clouds away and become more positive. So we were able to use that lesson throughout all 10 weeks. And they really showed, we introduced that lesson by playing freeze tags. So the coaches were the clouds and we were running around to tag the girls and we were trying to cover their stars. So when they froze, they had to activate their star power by yelling something that made them happy or made the girls smile to their face. Another lesson, as you can see in the picture, is a lesson 10 that I thought was really impactful, it was Words Matter. That lesson, we started out squeezing toothpaste onto a piece of paper and asking the girls, "Well, how do we get that toothpaste back in?" The tube. And they all looked at us like we were crazy. And we said, and it ended up wrapping up like, "That toothpaste is all of your words. You need to think before you speak because once you say something, you cannot get it back in." And so we, that lesson was a little bit different. We didn't give the theme of that lesson. We just introduced the toothpaste and went into our running. So when the girls finished each lap, they got a temporary tattoo on their arm and we gave them clues. So we wrote each letter. So by the end, the whole goal was to have Words Matters on their arm. So they realized that what they say really affects, affects not only themselves but everybody else. And then lastly, I know Lynn's going to talk about our practice 5K a little bit, so I'm going to talk about our final celebration. Our final celebration was after the Heartwood Acres 5K. We were able to invite the parents, family, back to Bagley and just have a team celebration of all the hard work and accomplishments these girls have done over the 10 weeks. So we were, we had a hot lap. Girls apparently brought in some food and we had a PowerPoint just with all the different pictures that we had over the season. We also gave like superlatives to every girl that we thought fit each one of their personalities. 31 also post-partnered with Girls on the Run, which is the bag company. They donated huge duffel bags for every single girl on our team. Well, actually, every girl that was participated in Girls on the Run through the McGee Women's Council. So we were able to give the girls a tote bag and some extra little goodies to celebrate as well at our end of the season party. And then, nothing.
The next couple slides are just pictures of two highlights of our season,
The next couple of slides are just pictures of two highlights of our season, which were the practice 5K, which was held at Bagley Elementary, and our final event, the 5K at Hartwood Acres. Our practice 5K was held on May 1st at Bagley. There was much anticipation and excitement among the go-tur team for this event. The girls had worked so hard for eight weeks to get to this point. And as coaches, we really wanted to make the event as real as possible to the first 5K that many of them are going to participate in. We designed a hilly course. We had a water station. We had encouraging signs lining the course, as you can see some there. We had a finish line and medals upon completion. What made the event so special, though, was the outpouring of support from the teachers, the students, and the parents. The Bagley faculty and staff made signs. They cheered along the course, and some even ran alongside the girls, encouraging them with positive words. Members of the student body decorated the final stretch to the finish line with chalk art. You can see that in the top right. Parents and siblings, staff at the water station cheered, handed out popcorn, took photos, and handed out gift bags at the end, filled with fruit, a Girls on the Run water bottle, and a t-shirt. To see the drive and determination in the girls' eyes that day was so truly inspiring. This wasn't just an individual event. This was teammates running together, motivating each other to do their best. And it wasn't as much about running as it was about confidence building, friendships formed, and believing in each other to accomplish the same goal. In the end, the entire team joined the final runner to cross the finish line together. It was emotional to witness the girls' inner strength, connectedness, and growth. We couldn't have been more proud of our team and the entire Bagley McKee support. And then our final event was on May 20th at Hartwood Acres in Pittsburgh, with 72 teams participating from Western Pennsylvania and over 2,000 participants. At this event, each go-tur girl runs with a parent or mentor running buddy. The early morning track to the beautiful Hartwood Acres for the 8:30 AM start was filled with excitement. The enormous field at Hartwood, if you've ever been there, it's a huge, beautiful, open field, very scenic course. The field was filled with 72 team tents, a face painting station, a DJ, appearances by local mascots, the Eden Park Cookie and the Penguin Iceberg, the Kona Ice Truck, go-tur merchandise shop, water stations, and a tent with post-race snacks. Drones buzzed overhead, capturing all of the fun of the morning. The joy of the accomplishment at the end of the run was shared by parents and girls alike. For me, it was an honor and a privilege to not only be a go-tur coach, but to be a parent of a go-tur girl. To witness firsthand the growth and confidence development in my daughter during the 10-week, you choked up, 10-week program is really gratifying. I find myself referring back to lessons frequently in our family discussions together since the season ended. And in a world where negativism is so prevalent, this program brings so much joy and optimism and positive growth in our daughters, teaching them that they have the power to rise to any challenge and can change the world. I'm grateful to Mrs. Spiker and Mrs. Stewart for their support in starting this program at Bagley. And I'm truly grateful to my fellow superstar coaches for their time in making this program so special. I'd like to introduce Carol Tinsley, another fellow parent.
Hi, I'm Carol Tinsley. My daughter is Addison Tinsley. I tried to narrow it down to just a couple of points, and it was really hard. It was limited by three, but I had to go with four. But first and foremost is that my daughter has truly enjoyed the program. It was a joy to pick her up from there. She actually just even recently participated in a cross-country camp that's held two weeks ago. She's like, "Man, it's fun." It wasn't the same. So just the joy of going to the practices really reflects upon not only the program itself, but then also the coaches as well. The other points, second point that I have, is the physical and the emotional well-being being that the whole program teaches. Obviously, with running, there is that physical aspect. But then, with each day, there was a theme, and that helps teach those soft skills that, you know, they get older, that we want them to have. Community within the school is my third point. I mean, you have three grade levels. You have girls that are there because of a common interest with no barriers. There was a scholarship program that they offered. Children couldn't afford it or different rates for different children who's on financial income. So there was 20 girls that got together that might never have taught. And I know a teacher as well, that when you have a third grader, and that fifth grader in the hallway says, "How are you?" Like, that's a big confidence booster. So, and that just creates then that community within the school, those girls passing each other and what we call it, teammates. And my last point is the practice 5K, because that was my favorite. Hartwood Acres was fantastic, and that is a very difficult course. And it was awesome seeing all the girls in their blue shirts with their number-one race tags on. But it was the practice 5K that I probably enjoyed the most. The coaches were together, and they were just amazing. We, as a family, run, and we participated in quite a few events, and, you know. I mean, there were glitter bombs, there were signs, there was the final award that they got for their ribbon. So they put a lot of time and effort into the program. And actually, the point that I wanted to end on was that, as Lynn had mentioned, when the last girl was coming across the front of the school, all of the girls just rallied with her and just helped her get across that line. And it was, it was a pretty emotional ending there to the end of the race. And the other last, very last thing I want, I asked Addison to say a few things. But I asked her, "What was her favorite practice?" And it was the day that they ran in the snow. And her favorite theme was the star power. So, thank you for having me, Caroline. Have my program, and thank you to the coaches. Claire Bennet.
Hi, my name is Claire Bennet, and I'm going in the fourth grade to share at Bagley. I was involved in this year's Girls on the Run, and I really enjoyed all the practices. Practices are fun, because we play games such as meatball. Point was to make the person in the middle of the circle laugh, and if you did, you would now be the person in the middle. I also enjoyed the game with the shower curtain. We kind of had to work together and get the shower curtain flipped from the other side without touching the floor. Practices allowed me to learn about working together, compromising, and much more. I made tons of friends during Girls on the Run, and I had lots of fun running with them. Practice 5K was so much fun. When I crossed the finish line, I was so happy that I did. My mom, grandma, and brother were all there. The real 5K, I ran with my dad. I had my hair springed blue and blonde, and I had face chalk on already. When I crossed the finish line, I was so overjoyed. And to chop it all off, I had pen and paper. Girls on the Run really was the best thing ever. All thanks to Coach McRussey, Coach Cleese, and Coach Bashgrove. I'm looking forward to being a part of Girls on the Run.
My favorite part of Girls on the Run was the 5K at Hartwood Acres. I accomplished my goal running three miles and crossing the finish line with a medal. Also getting the Positively Positive Award was very special for me along with my medal. I enjoyed Girls on the Run all season and getting to know other girls. By the end of the season, I got to know all of the girls and enjoyed running around the school with them. It was great to make new friends and accomplish the practice. I loved my season of Girls on the Run and can't wait to do it next year.
I'm going to close by saying that I was blessed to witness the girls in this program caring for each other like I have never seen young ladies do. Ironically, I was going to talk about the practice 5K. Two girls took it away from me. I have to say, I watched this little girl struggle. She had some stomach cramps. Her mom ran with her. The coaches went back and ran with her. Her friends were running, running with her. And when she came around that parking lot and everyone that had finished got up, ran over to her, and I am telling you, it was so loud with cheer to get her to that finish line. And before she crossed, those girls all stopped. They stopped, and she finished independently by herself, and they continued to cheer and scream. And I will tell you, there wasn't a dry eye. I was crying, the teachers were crying. It was so emotional, and that's what this program is about. This program is about supporting each other, building each other up, and using that star power to make a difference. So I would like to thank our coaches for dedicating so much time, and I look forward to this year's program as well. So thank you, girls. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to make a comment and thank my parents and especially your girls. I can't believe you could come here to talk to all these old people. You guys were so tall. That was beautiful. And that was what followed my, to be honest, for all the things we've done. Pictures, going through and seeing all these colleges.
And thank you for letting us share tonight. It's something that's so positive that we really wanted to get the word out. Thank you.
I just, I would like to add, too, that I think this is fabulous program for young girls, because we all know the research shows that there are negative effects from softball. So my hope is that this kind of program will empower these young women to become even more than what they potentially think they are. And I think it's fabulous, and I'm also very excited because I have two and a half little girls to go back. Someday, she's going to be.
She will be a girl of love, absolutely.
How do the kids get into it? I wonder if there's more kids that want to do it than there's sports.
There is a registration process, and unfortunately, when you hit your cap, everything is done through Girls on the Run, their central office. We do not handle any of the registration. All the money is dealt online. So they open up for a week, and they see how many you get. If you are under your number, you're fine, and they just fill you until you hit your number. You are over your number, they stock registration for a week, and they run a lottery, and they do it by random. And then they email, they notify everybody, you know, if you are on the team, or if not. And then from there on out, if you hit your max, your site is closed.
A second team is an option?
Yeah.
A second team is an option if you have a member of coaches. I mean, it's, it's two coaches for 15 girls, three for 20. I believe that you can do, if you have four coaches, you could do two teams of 15. And then if you have six, you could do.
Do you need a teacher? Do you need a teacher as one of the coaches?
I do not believe that you do need the teacher, a teacher.
And how can we get more adult women certified coaches?
I know that there were some parents that approached us, and I know that there were some, there were some teachers from Non-Hew that could also look into it, and I think that they are also interested in starting and maybe not be a site as well.
Did you guys break a school day, or did you get out of school?
Exactly. And I do have to say, Girls on the Run, it's a nonprofit organization. They do a lot of grant writing. They do a lot of fundraising, donations. There are a lot of scholarships available to the girls signing up. So depending on what your income is, you know, is what you pay, there are options for getting girls that may not have tennis shoes, Asics, and getting them shoes to wear, proper shoes to wear. So it's a wonderful program, it really is.
Thank you so much, Lynn.
Thank you.
I applaud all of you, and thank you so much for coming and telling us about this, especially to coaches who put in a lot of time into this, a lot of dedication to the girls. And congratulations to all you girls. You handled yourselves so professionally in a microphone. And I can see that this really produced very positive results. So congratulations to all.
Well, this is exciting as well. Yesterday was our opening day for teachers. Prior to that, last Friday was our first teacher induction day for our new teachers. With that being said, I'd like to thank Mr. Leger for being at the opening day and greeting our staff. We greatly appreciate you being there. I know Mr. House, who was working that day and was unable to attend. During our opening day, we had a variety of activities. We also had the Greater Lake Public Partners in Education talk about the various grants that have been awarded to our teachers and to the programs, you know, the Greater Lakes Public School District. A lot of professional development occurs during this time as well. This year, we do have four professional development days. During that time, we have professional development on various topics. One meeting, school safety. I know Mr. Krump had did a presentation on that. We also talked about Every Student Succeed Act and did an overview on that, which has replaced the No Child Left Behind Education Act with that. We have, we will have a professional learning community, professional development. We've had professional development on various software, e-all Pass, Flex Tech, which will be utilized during our new schedule, during lunch and learn for that, as well as many special education trainings dealing with mental health, first aid training, and as well as high-impact influences on achievement, math professional development, reading, drumming. You see, it's been very busy. Two days, and we have two more days that are going to be just as busy. And we will close Friday with our second day of teacher induction. So it's very exciting. It's great feedback. We have a lot of great things going on. So are there any questions about anything?
I move for adoption resolution number 18 to approve the sixth-grade programs in Gates.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
I'd like to bundle resolutions number 19 and 20. Number 19 being to authorize the administration to seek bids for the purchase or lease of one driver's education vehicle. And 20 to authorize the administration to seek bids for the purchase of a baby grand from the end. So move.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
I'd also like to bundle resolutions number 21 through 27. These are all agreements that we approved at the beginning of every school year. We did discuss them last week, so so moved on all of 21 through 27. Start.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
Lastly, I move for adoption resolution number 28 to approve a tuition student for the 1819 school year from Leavenworth School District. Start.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
And lastly, our next curriculum committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, September the 18th, at 5:30 PM here in CIC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Leger. I announce, I move for adoption resolution number 29 to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I move for adoption resolution number 30. Paying the bills.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I move for adoption resolution number 31 to approve the 2017-18 taxes allowances.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I move for adoption resolution number 32 to approve 2017-2018 year-end budget transfers.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I move for adoption resolution number 33. Approve gifts, grants, and donations. I would like to point out that one of those is the Yom Ha'atzchik. I would like to point out that one of those is the Yonwatt 22 upright model piano.
Start.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Finance committee meeting minutes from August 14th are attached. Next finance committee meeting is Tuesday, September 1st, 2018, 5:00 PM at the senior round library. Facilities operation plan, I move for adoption resolution number 34, approve the LES contract modifications as listed. Motion on the floor, second. Questions on the motion?
Yes, can we have an explanation?
Okay.
Change order 20 is for sanitary lift station. If you got to give a brief history, portions of site utilities weren't able to be physically located during surveying process done early design by our surveyor, which was contracted directly by the owner. They made recommendation to us as far as if you cannot locate that per contract, you are required to reach out to the local municipal authority, which they did, which referenced them to their engineering record, which is gifts and things. While they were helpful, their information was also incomplete as far as two important manholes on Lincoln Avenue, which is a sanitary line which runs along Lincoln Avenue. The design had that line be a tie-in for about 50% of the building. 50% of the building, which is the academic wings, face Lincoln Avenue. From there, unable to locate those manholes and inward elevations, which is where the pipe actually ties into the manholes. Without that information, assumption was made of trying to tie into that line at that elevation, guesstimated by additional information from the site utility point. At that point, we moved along as far as design and construction with the intent of locating the line on Lincoln Avenue, which was done during construction approximately about three months ago. The line itself was at elevation higher than what was anticipated, tying in roughly from 242 feet away from the building. The elevation of the inward came out of the building to the elevation within Lincoln Avenue, the slope had been too shallow. So communication went on as far as can we reduce the slope? Communication went on, can we change tie-in location to further down toward Shop and Save at Cedar Street? Both of those had a lot of unknowns tied to them and also recommendation of doing a sanitary lift station was presented in the condition. At that time, we decided to move with that recommendation from our project design team with the notion that while a 75,000 dollar change order is something you don't like to deal with during construction, if we would have known the height of the sanitary line, sorry, sanitary line on Lincoln Avenue, we would have to raise the building pad substantially between one and two feet. With site construction, you try to level the site, meaning you don't remove fill, you don't bring in, by raising that building pad two feet, you would have greatly missed the cost as far as getting to that elevation for your finished floor and those inwards coming out of the building.
Excuse me. Are you saying that the cost to raise the building was significantly higher than the cost of the ground?
We've got to go into an in-depth analysis of what that cost would be in the raising of the information I was wondering. Anytime you're adding two feet of additional building pad fill, that over about 75,000 square feet of building, of square footage, you're going to definitely have a cost higher than 75,000. We also threw out change orders, but I just wanted to make note that even though we're on the change order 23, today we're at $18,000 in change in the black as far as additional change orders. Not that all the change orders were additional, they're just changes in the contract, but we're sitting very nicely at $18,000. I want to make note, there was a comment about flooding on the site. Our sanitary line is not tied into the existing system as of yet because of this. There wasn't any sort of flooding tied to the sanitary system. Hasn't been water tested, we don't know our test, we do an air pressurized testing for our sanitary line, but since we're not tied in yet, nothing will be affected as far as any sort of flooding, backup sewer drain. We have plenty of gunseas in design and construction nowadays, we never had a backup sewer.
Mr. Thomas, could you also explain the addition of $8,900 for the yellow construction?
Change order 23, is that right?
Yes, 23.
That involves the kindergarten sink nights and the classrooms itself, the toilets. They were installed at an elevation that wasn't conducive to our age group.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Move for adoption resolution number 35, request permission to advertise for bids at 1812 Lincoln Avenue site work as developed by My Old Division of KU Resource Incorporated.
Start.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion?
I do have a question, Mr. Thomas, can you explain as to the public what we're actually putting out for bid?
This is in design right now. I'd like to advertise for bids so that I can get a turnaround of construction this fall and this winter to install parking spots for guests in the administration building before the plans close, the asphalt plans close in November.
So at this point, you're still in design, you don't really have the estimates?
No, we haven't run the estimate process, this is, we're roughly in the design development and construction diagram phase.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I move for adoption resolution number 36 to approve implementation of district-wide unified communication systems.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion?
Yes, what is this going to cost?
It's about $190,000 and it's the replacement of our current phone systems, but also working toward unified communication system to include fills, speakers, box, video, and there's a lot of mass notification and emergency communications as part of it.
And we're talking about at Nanu, at the academy?
Across the district.
Okay, and it was explained to me that this will actually match what is being installed right now at the New Orleans?
Yeah, for the phone piece, yes.
Okay, Mr. Weisen, how are we going to pay for this?
Well, we could do one of two things. We've talked a little bit about this at the finance committee meeting last week. We have a capital reserve fund that we could dip into and pull funds from there. In addition to that, we have another option, which we were very fortunate to receive that premium rate holiday from the consortium that we just been in in the month of July. While we had, I'd shared with the committee that there was a chance that we may get a refund, it wasn't for sure. But we did get that refund check, it was about $292,000, so what I would like to do is talk with the administration and then come forward to the board with the recommendation plus could use those monies for this district-wide project.
Robin, is that a firm cost?
Yes.
Okay, and that includes any type of installation or?
That includes all of that, yeah.
Mr. Ward, just so that you know, the state schools targeted equipment grant as well this year for $25,000. And if we received that grant, that money would be allocated towards the first business. And then any surplus, or any monies that we don't have to spend of that money that we received through the consortium, my recommendation, and again, we want to get the support of everybody, is to reallocate that to the capital reserve fund and put those towards those two roofing projects that we've been discussing in front of senior high and middle school.
And the only reason I bring it up is it wasn't part of the budget that's pre-2018, 19. So if there's, you know, ways that we can actually pay for it out of the $292,000 that we have received, I think that we should go by, do so.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. The next facilities operation planning committee meeting is Thursday, September 6th, at 3:30 Gavin Building. Student activities and recreation, Mrs. Langer?
Yes, thank you. I move for adoption of resolution number 37 to approve the Greater Lake Petro Youth Football Board of Directors.
Start.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion?
I do have a comment, Mr. President. If you clicked on the attachment that came with this, you noticed that there were eight board of directors, eight members of the board of directors. What we're voting on tonight are only those in the public. There was the athletic director and the high school principal and two board members included. We are not voting on those, we are voting on the four, two representing the youth football league and two representing the youth cheerleading.
Thank you, Mrs. Langer. I do have a question. Is this the first year for this board?
Yes.
Okay, tell me why we're putting a board together for youth football when we don't really have any additional boards or any other, like varsity football or junior varsity? Why are we going so, and actually who picked the members to be on this board? Because I noticed there are some, I think Eric's on the board, you're on the board, as well as some administrators.
Yeah, we were on the athletic board.
I chair the athletic committee, that's why I'm on there.
I understand.
Mr. Hauser is also a member of the athletic committee as well as Mr. Macassia.
Okay, why are we putting this board together?
I think it's because what we have is, it gives us an opportunity to get some insight as far as where the youth football needs to go and the issues that they need to address. Unfortunately, whenever we're on the athletic committee, we sometimes are not hands-on down there. Fortunately, we have Mr. Krumpka and he had to inform us of the things that were going on. So we were able to make the decisions necessary on the first year. The second year, it was, I think it was better for us to develop a board in which they could focus directly on that. It's a massive number of kids and I think we'd be better served by doing it that way than us trying to group them in with everything else.
How many kids have participated?
We could give that for a minute.
Okay, well, how many participated last year? How about if I asked that?
Oh, well, I can tell you from the flag level, we had four teams last year, eight, nine kids a team, so we were about 40 kids at the flag level. That's kindergarten, first and second grade. We have a full team of juniors, junior varsity, which would be third and fourth graders. I think we were over 20, oh, you were there.
There was about 25, I think.
Correct.
About 30 of us.
Yeah, the varsity team, which were near fifth and sixth graders, had over 30 kids. And I believe, I don't know this for sure, but I believe Mark telling me earlier when we had signups, that numbers will write at, if not exceeding where we were last year. But again, if you want the number for this year, I don't want to speculate. We can get it from Mark and tell him you know where.
Well, I actually appreciate that. So the board that we're actually voting on tonight, it will actually answer to the athletic committee or to this board?
To the board. I would speak to the advisory board, which is really what this is. At the first meetings regarding youth football and youth cheerleading that I know I attended and I know Mr. Hauser did as well, there was much discussion about parental involvement in these activities because number one, at the age of the students. And so from the very beginning of this program, it was always, I think, the intent to have that community leadership in parents' involvement. And I think that's really what we're seeing here, is that these people, as well as the athletic committee members and the athletic director and the principal, are those that will help to make decisions regarding the teams, as well as advising this entire board regarding what's going on with the youth football program. We call it youth football, we know that it also involves cheerleading as well. So from the very beginning, I think this was the intent.
Tell me what the function of the Greater Latrobe Youth Football Commission is. What is that function and what do they do for that person?
I can speak to what his function was last year and essentially he's a liaison between Football USA, youth football, trying to guide our coaches, properly train our coaches in youth football, appropriate tackling techniques, and just acting as a guide and conduit toward reshaping the game of youth football to be a little more safe for our kids.
Okay, is he around at practices?
Yes, sir. Again, I'm speaking from my experience last year, season's relatively new this year, but yes, he trained every one of our coaches prior to the season last year in heads-up football. And he would attend practice on a regular basis, he would attend meetings between the partners, between Paul's Home, Mount Pleasant, and Latrobe, when we were discussing rule changes or five-wall changes, kind of acted as a guide.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
I agree for adoption resolution number 38 to award bids for winners of sports equipment.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions or comments on the motion?
I do have a question. Dan, this is the equipment that we were going to use, some of the surplus money, if I'm actually the?
Yeah, not all of it. The equipment we identified for the surplus, I believe, is a seven-man sled as well as the wrestling mat. Those were the two larger items. There are some other items on here that that was already planned for.
Okay, so we're actually, we actually budgeted for it?
These items, yes. Majority of these items, correct.
Okay, but the sleds, we did not.
We did not budget. We planned to use our reserve account for those items because as we thought, they were one-time non-recurring costs, they were larger dollar figures, we didn't want to impact the budget on them, so we said, let's pull them out of the budget and purchase from our reserves accounts that had been taxed.
Have they been ordered?
Yes, yes, they have.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Community relations department works.
Present attachment for the July Parks Audit Commission meeting. And there is a meeting on September 20th, Latrobe Municipal Building in the green room floor 30, that's all.
Thank you, Department of Works. What's more, the intermediate unit, Mrs. Langer?
Yes, the intermediate unit board did not meet in July. Our next WIU committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, the 28th of August at 7:00 PM in the WIU boardroom. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Langer. EWCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mr. Music?
Thank you. EWCTC Joint Operating Committee meeting minutes from August 15th are attached to Fourth Amendment. And the next EWCTC Joint Operating Committee meeting will be Wednesday, September 26th, and that will be at 7:00 PM over at the EWCTC boardroom.
Thank you, Mrs. Langer. I do have a question to give, Mr. Music.
Sure.
Has there been any more discussions about the building?
Yes.
And can you actually enlighten us?
Actually, we're just starting to, like we was talking about the.
Feasibility.
Feasibility study that was for the August 15th. Nothing has been substantiated.
Okay, do you have, I want to call it a ticker list of some of the concerns with the building? I know you've stated that you're.
Preliminary, they did talk about some potential concerns.
That's why they want.
It's a defensive statement.
I understand.
Prior to that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Board policy liaison, Mrs. Langer?
Yes, when you came in this evening at your state, there was a PSBA handout and again, we're looking at a.
we're looking at a set of candidates for two thousand nineteen. It lists all the candidates that are running for these offices there. I'm going to ask that you look this over and decide, try to make a decision on who you would like to vote for, and then come back on September eleventh, we need to discuss this and pick a slate of candidates and then Mrs. Alschaus will submit them to PSBA. So if you would please look that over, read about the candidates and see who you think is most qualified, then we'll discuss that, then it'll be September eleventh meeting. And we have, do have a board policy meeting on September the sixth at one PM in the administration department.
Thank you, Ms. May. Transportation, Mr. Music.
Thank you. Push on forward to approve the resolution number thirty...
Nine.
Thirty-nine, which is to the school bus, the school bus van drivers for twenty eighteen twenty-nine.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes.
Motion on the floor to adopt resolution number forty, which is to approve the pupil transportation schedule for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes.
Motion on the floor to adopt resolution number forty-one, which is to approve the individual transportation contracts for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, for the year.
Second. Have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes. Okay. Technology?
Mr. Palmer is here. This evening, so the only information under technology is that the next meeting will be October sixteenth, at sixty AM, right here in the...
Superintendent's recommendations?
I ask the board to move on resolution number forty-two, which is the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Greater Latrobe School District, the Greater Latrobe Education Association, and Allison Haverborn.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number forty-three, which are resignations listed. I would note, the school psychology intern, which was actually approved last spring when Dr. Soltis was here, recently notified us that she was going to be unable to do the internship here at Greater Latrobe for personal reasons. So I just wanted to note why she was returning.
Still moved. Second.
Have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number forty-four, which is the approval of the resignation of the superintendent and board secretary, Darlene Alschaus, for retirement effective December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Still moved. Second.
Have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion?
I'd just like to say, thank you very much. Also, I'd like to say thank you very much, Mr. Palmer. You've been a pleasure.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I'm glad you're still here for four more.
Gee, you stole my comment, Mr. Macassia. You stole my comment.
Any other questions or comments?
Been a long time coming, Dr. Ward.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes.
Darlene, I'll share my notes.
Just remember, we have September, October, November, before she's gone, so we'll have plenty of time to hopefully recognize that there's still four months left.
I know, I saw.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number forty-five, which is the approval of professional personnel. And this is Catherine Richards, who is an English teacher who will be at Step One Masters beginning tomorrow, August twenty-second.
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number forty-six, which is the approval of professional personnel substitute teacher, Emily Smith.
Still moved.
Second. Have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number forty-seven, which is the approval of the support personnel. This is JD White, being appointed as the teacher leader in K to two math at Dudley Elementary School.
Still moved.
Question. Have a motion on the floor in second. Questions on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number forty-eight, which is the approval of the support personnel classified equipments, Richard Baker and Stevens Cacandi as custodians.
So, second. Have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number forty-nine, which I know is not on your agenda. It is to ask the board to approve, to advertise the board retreat on Monday, September tenth, two thousand eighteen, at five thirty PM here in the Center for Student Creativity.
Still moved. Second.
Have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? Have any questions from the audience? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes.
And under other business, there are a lot of back-to-school nights going on in our elementary buildings. As Dr. Temper, our teachers started yesterday, we have four full days of professional development before our students return next Monday. We're all excited about the students returning. Just as a reminder for those secondary students, in our junior high school, all seventh grade students will be recording Monday, but in the eighth grade, it will be the web leaders that will be recording. And in the senior high school, the nine to twelve, all of the ninth graders will be coming, but the other students, the link crews, will be coming. As you are well aware, we started this practice last year with our web and link crew students. It is a wonderful day for new students to our junior and senior high school, our seventh and ninth graders, to get acclimated as well as to do a lot of activities and to meet some upperclassmen in a different environment than rather than going to class as your set day. So we really are pleased that we are able to do this and we're looking forward to the first day next Monday. In addition, I mentioned this last week, on September eleventh, Tuesday, at eleven o'clock in the morning, we are, will be attending the St. Vincent College Prevention Project's fortieth anniversary program, and they are having a luncheon to honor this program. As you're well aware, Greater Latrobe has been part of this program for many years. Dr. George actually sits on the board and he will be attending that lunch, but if anybody else is interested in attending, please let Mrs. Alschaus know this evening because we do need to reply by this Friday. Thank you very much. Our meetings in September are the eleventh, that evening, as well as the Tuesday, September eighteenth, here in the center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sawyer. Hearing of visitors, part two, this is where anyone in the audience can come forward, state your name and address and speak of anything of concern.
Good evening, Jared Yanney, one oh six Tara Drive, Community Township. My concern this evening, and I'll try and keep my comments very brief because I've known this solicitor a long time and I know it's justice to be very swift, but we're a little bit time, so I'll keep it as short as I can. My concern is concerning my daughter's class size. She is entering first grade at Mountain View Elementary. And in looking at the numbers, she's going from a class of about nineteen or twenty to a class of twenty-seven. So I have a couple of questions for the board. Is this a concern that you share that these class sizes seem to be getting bigger? And also, what is the board's policy, if any, regarding what the optimum class size should be? I was here last week and I heard the report that there have been a number of, I won't call them last minute, but over the summer, there've been a number of students who have registered, perhaps more than the board was expecting. And then a number of those students, maybe as many as half, were coming with an IMP or a five oh four, and are going to need additional attention from the teacher. My wife is a teacher in the district and she always says that if a student has a special plan like that, her colleagues feel that that's two students or perhaps three, depending upon the problem. I, I guess I'm just trying to get a sense from the board what your understanding of the optimum class size is and how you feel the needs of the students are being met, particularly at Mountain View, or is this a district-wide problem? Are the numbers the same across the three elementary schools? Just in looking at the numbers, if the, and again, just based upon the information that's publicly available on the website, if the first grade at Mountain View was still at four instructors, the class size would be at around nineteen or twenty, but now that it's been reduced to three or twenty-seven, what is the board's feeling on this? I'll just sit down and listen to your comments at that. Thank you.
I just want to throw out some numbers and then board members feel free to comment. Mr. Yanney, I appreciate your comments, I do. I will tell you that the process of determining how many teachers are in each grade level is something that starts around April. We try to get our kindergarten registration done, try to figure out what kindergarten numbers are, and then we look forward to staffing. As far as a policy or procedure, we do not have a policy or procedure on optimal class size. If you take a look at research, go to the Google machine, do, do class size. If you look for optimal sizes, research at one time showed that to have a significant impact, you got to get around fifteen. Research is now showing sixteen, seventeen, eighteen would be the optimal number for research to back up significant improvement with achievement in class. Research also shows that it boils down to good instruction in the classroom. I do not discount what Mr. Yanney said about a number of, you know, the fact that an IMP student in the classroom can have a significant impact on instruction time, et cetera. I'll tell you that can happen in a classroom of sixteen, just as well as a classroom of twenty-five. Art, from that point in April, early May, when we looked at enrollment, elementary enrollment across the three buildings has gone up nineteen students. So I talked about seventy-two last week, Mr. Yanney, seventy-two enrollments. I'm not sure if I mentioned the number of withdrawals that we had as well. We did have a significant number of withdrawals, so sometimes that offsets. But last week, we were at about a plus of thirty-some. I can get specific numbers, but I'm just ballparking for you, okay? We were at a, an overall positive of about thirty. So nineteen of those kids went to elementary, nineteen of them were, you know, somewhere between fifteen and nineteen went to the secondary level. I will tell you, the two grade levels out of those nineteen students, fourteen of those kids went to kindergarten or first grade, okay? But other areas saw some drops of students as well, but overall, three elementaries, we are at a plus nineteen. When the principals and I sit down and we talk about class size and class numbers, our optimal number is, depending upon the grade, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Our average class size across the three elementaries is twenty-two, even with the plus nineteen, we are at twenty-two. Does that mean in some cases, we are at nineteen? Yes, second grade at Bagley is at nineteen per class right now. Does that mean that we are higher in some places? Yes, Mr. Yanney talked about first grade. Mr. Yanney, right now I have seventy-seven students in first grade and three teachers, so I'm right around twenty-five. And I, Mrs. Pellis, do we have twenty-seven in the class?
We do not have any twenty-sevens in the first grade.
Okay, and I wasn't sure. I'm not doing that, like I, I didn't know that, so if that was correct.
I was just doing division, which was excellently taught by your district.
I appreciate that. But I, I have, I do have us at twenty-five in first grade. We talk about concerns when we come up with class sizes. I mean, it's a conversation among the three principals. I'm going to tell you that they, they fight with me, they do. We fight with each other. Sometimes things get thrown in the room. Right, Mrs. Stewart? Yes, okay. It's not an easy decision for us. We try to weigh the needs of, of every student, every grade level, and we don't go to a number if we're not comfortable with the supports that we can have in place. I will tell you, there have been times, I go back to last year with Kim's kindergarten, it started to get to a number where the, the average class size started to get to a number where we were starting to feel uncomfortable, but ultimately at the end, we made the decision to move forward, and, and this year, we're at about the same class size as we were. I want to step back for one second. Last week, I told you seventy-two enrollments over a twenty-five day period. Can I tell you from last Tuesday to this Tuesday, fifty-one? Where are all of those kids are going to shake out? I don't know. I haven't looked at specifics, but I will also tell you that we have eleven kids that went out, so that's a plus forty. I will tell you that a lot of the kids that are coming in now are outside placements, so they, they won't necessarily see our halls, they won't see our buildings. And, and the last thing that I would say too, too, is when we do our overall counts, sometimes kids are placed in a homeroom for accounting purposes only, and they, they are never really a, a full-time part of that homeroom. They may go to encore classes only, they may receive their language arts and math instruction outside of the classroom. I know I just threw a lot of stuff out to you, but I will tell you that I understand this concern, I do. But I will tell you, in response, it's not a willy-nilly decision that we made. There is a ton of conversation that goes into that decision, and, and I, I do listen to the principals, we balance all of our needs, in the end, we have a conversation and we move forward. If twenty kids move into Mountain View tomorrow in the first grade, obviously, we're not going to go to school with thirty-five in the classroom. But right now, the administrative staff is comfortable with the number that we have, and, and I would, I would, I don't think that you've spoken to Mrs. Pellis about your individual concerns yet. I would encourage you to do that if you have specific concerns.
It's more a general concern.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And if I may ask, if you said that if, you know, twenty more moved in and now you're at thirty-five, that number would make you uncomfortable. What's the lowest number that would make you uncomfortable? You don't have a set policy.
And I would throw that right back to you. What is too big? Is it twenty-five? Is it twenty-four? Is it twenty-three? My wife's a teacher. She yanks at me all the time about the fact that she has twenty-two biology kids. Like, does she yank more when it's twenty-three? Does she yank more when it's twenty-five? You know, we don't have a policy. I think that we go with the knowledge of our kids, I go with my principal's knowledge of their kids, the knowledge of their teachers, the good instruction that goes on in our classrooms. I don't have a set number. That may not be the answer that you want. You probably want me to tell you, if it gets to twenty-eight, we're going to...
But I was asking for a sort of...
No, no, I just wanted to get what the board's sense was of the class size, the right size versus one that's too big. I would say when, when the principals and I feel we can't manage, or that our staff can't manage the need in that grade level, that's when we would have concern. But there's no magic number. Doctors George and I have had conversations sometimes about the number of kids in kindergarten. We talk about it. There have been years that we've, we've had twenty-five, twenty-six in a kindergarten classroom. There have been years that, just a couple of years ago, they had fifty-seven kids come into kindergarten. That was a low year, that year, because of enrollment. It's another piece that factors into this. We try to look forward. How many staff members will we need down the road? I will tell you that ten years ago, in my first year as the principal of Bagley, I had six hundred and forty-eight kids at Bagley. Mrs. Stewart today has five hundred and forty-six. She's down a hundred. When I was the principal of Bagley my first year, Mrs. Haller had over eight hundred students at LES. She's at six eighty-two. And Mrs. Pellis had over seven hundred kids at Mountain View. She's at six eleven right now. So all three buildings as a whole are down about a hundred kids. Sherry's down more than that. So it's, it's a trend. We have reduced staff over the last few years, but again, it's not just based on the number, it's based on the conversation that we have about the need in the grade level and, and whether our staff members, our competent staff members can, can handle that. can handle that.
We've had this conversation every time during the last, I know when I first got on the board. We tried to come up with, I think there was a push to get a number of kids, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct on that? We had big arguments about it.
We had big arguments.
They were in discussions, they were arguments. They got pretty heated at times.
I mean, we've had, you know, kindergarten classes. My particular knowledge in Bagley, because my kids went there, I mean, we've had kindergarten classes with twenty-four kids, and I would argue that's way too many from my personal opinion. But I also value the opinion of my staff and my administrators telling me, they're incredible teachers. They're phenomenal teachers. And with enough support throughout the building, they did fine. Those kids flourished. I volunteered in those classes. I saw what those kids were achieving. It was incredible. But that was that class. So you don't know who you're here, and this class handled that. And it is a moving target, and I don't think, I don't think it behooves us as a school district to say, no, we're never having more than twenty kids in the class. I mean, that would be a wonderful ideal world. That would be fantastic. But then we still have to go to tax collectors and ask for all those salaries to increase all those teaching positions. And that's the job of this board. That's the balance that we do constantly every day. So... There is some magic in that, sorry.
Anyone else?
Last week, Eric, you gave a six-minute presentation on stuff with the board. Some of your comments were, you guys behave in an ethical manner, whether it's bullying, harassing, or spreading misleading lies and rumors. Regardless of that, when we're wrong by these types of behaviors, we must maintain our character and ethical principles. You feel that somebody on this board is trying to tear the board apart. Premature misleading statements about board members, it's the administrators in the TruMish and the school district, and the mayor. The comment really made it confusing because our right-thinking members on this board. So you're saying we have some wrong-thinking members on the board, too. Would you care to share who the wrong-thinking members are? I'll take that as a no.
You don't?
So here's the test of your ethics, all of you guys on the board, that you're so ethical. You know, people love to talk. People love to talk. And I know you guys aren't going to discuss executive sessions, but I'm going to bring a few things up. First question is, do we take minutes in executive sessions? Mr. Naples?
Keep going, and at the end, no, no. Keep going, and at the end, anyone wants to address it, they can.
Okay. Because I feel we have some very serious problems with this board right now. In June, I was at the meeting, after you guys had your executive sessions, and people went outside there and were talking. And what I picked off in that conversation was that you guys were told back there, the school will give you lucky to be in it by Thanksgiving. And then fifteen minutes later, we came out here and put this big show on about how everything's right on, right on track. Right on track. Which was just such absolute crap. There's no other way to say it. Now, none of you nine board members said that you were told fifteen minutes earlier back there, it'd give you lucky to be in that school by Thanksgiving. You just let that show go on, which tells me you have no ethics. Not because that was a non-truth. Does anybody want to tell me that that was not true? Because you're lying, but I believe Mr. Thomas said. Does anybody want to tell me I'm wrong? Because, you know, you are by far the most outstanding ethical person on this school board. You know, I asked Mr. Naples two months ago to have a meeting about the right to know that I was given a bunch of crap, because Mark Beer's never paid for handing mirrors as part of the pass.
Listen, we're not going to talk about students. You're out of order.
Okay.
You're out of...
How am I out of line when I follow the right to know and you can't give me the truth?
Stop talking, and what can you talk? You're out of order by talking about students' names, anything having to do with students, which by the way, which by the way is not true, and which by the way, I asked you to schedule a meeting with me, and you never did.
No, I asked you to schedule the meeting.
You were out of order, and you will not mention students' names.
That's fine. I asked you to schedule a meeting. I asked you to include Mr. Hauser and Mr. Watson. We can go back and review the tape from two months ago, because it's all intact. And I said, give me a call when you can meet. In the following week, I'm on vacation. So you didn't tell me, I asked you to schedule. Okay? The reason I'm asking about if we take minutes in executive session, which I believe we don't, is right off the district's website, right off your website, well, this is important. Number one, you broke the sunshine law by meeting with those people two months ago, because there's nothing here to cover, so they should have been back there talking about the school. And it says, no, the purpose of the executive session must be announced prior to going into the executive session, which to me means you should be in this meeting first, and then you should say, we're going to go into executive session for the following reasons.
Your time is up, Mr. Fue.
And it also says...
Mr. Fue, your time is up. I may get...
Minutes must be kept.
Mr. Fue, please sit down.
Please put this in the newspaper when you... Please read it, because they lie through their teeth. What's so hard about being up? Minutes must be kept, that made public, while the need for conscientiality no longer exists.
Please sit down, sir.
This is so wrong when you have the stretch. Thank God we have the teachers we have that make this school so great.
Mr. Fue, please, please sit down. We can ask you.
I'm sorry, you can never answer my question. This is ridiculous. Ron Sinavis, 308 Cherry Street, Lexington. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Abardo for the common sense and integrity and transparency he has displayed as a director of the Red Flint Creek School District. These are outstanding qualities that should be admired and adopted by any director of any board. Mr. Abardo, your pursuit of transparency and truth is recognized and supported by the residents and taxpayers. We salute you. Transparency and truth are very sacred concepts. I'm confused about the elementary school project. I ask myself, what is really going on? I thought I was alone, but believe me, you are the talking of town in this school district and out of this school district. Everywhere you go, supermarkets, stores, bars, all you are hot talking at bars. But, you know, I thought I was confused. Everyone's confused, and everyone's asking the same question. What is really going on? No one seems to know. In June, you had the project manager, who calls himself captain, fantastic, states that he sees no reason the school will not open on time. A director stated that he's never seen a construction project move so smoothly. It's just thus not happened that way. And another director visited the school twice and stated, she stated that the building is wonderful, and she found it to be frankly amazing, and all the problems that they're talking about are unfounded. Then we have others who are saying, this is wrong, that is wrong. Mistakes and wonders have been made. There are water issues in the school. Water's coming in from the top, from the sides, from the floor. Some of these people are construction workers that see that every day. Now, I admit, some of those people would have been called the poorables in the last election, but where do you turn for transparency and truth? One example is the dryer pump. These the poorables out there, for at least two or three months, have been discussing the dryer, what the need was, what the mistakes that were made. But the first time the public hears about it is tonight, whenever you have to approve money. Now, why wasn't it released to public the problems? And the dryer pump's just one problem. They're talking about a lot of problems. Now, does the construction foreman really understand what is going on? Or did he invoke a Hillary and inadvertently make a false representation? Would the director that never saw a construction project go so smoothly still stand by that statement? And the director that visited the school twice and found the school to be wonderful and amazing, and the problem was unfounded, must have visited the school in a parallel universe and bizarre among them. Does those problems exist whenever she visited the school? A letter to the editor by Greg Fue was to encourage the board to be more transparent and truthful. The administration released a letter as an example of transparency and saying the building project was aggressive. Aggressive is a word that has both positive and negative connotations. For example, he was a student who took an aggressive approach to learning and graduated number one in his class. Or he was a student who took an aggressive approach to learning and was a bully, got in fights in school, brought to gas stations, now in jail. Both students took an aggressive approach to learning. If the approach to the building project was aggressive, and the administration reports, as the administration reported, appears that it was not aggressive enough to finish on time, or maybe it was too aggressive, and mistakes were made and not properly done. Which one is it? Don't answer that, and maybe testify for that. Unfortunately, the letter from the administration created more questions than an answer. Where is transparency? The the poorables seem to have more truth and transparency than the board and the administration. Some thought that Mr. Fue's letter was insulting. What he wanted you to do, he was encouraging you to be transparent and truthful. And it's been reported that someone made a comment about Mr. Fue, saying that they hated Mr. Fue. And they hated blank Mr. Fue. And a blank word is both a adjective and a verb.
So you've got thirty seconds.
What's that?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Okay, the rest of the taxpayers just want two things for you. One is the pride of decent educational gifts. You do that. You pass out them. The other one is transparency. You'll fail that one. So go home tonight, you can say how much you hate me, I don't care. It doesn't bother me. But just remember, the truth will make you free.
Anyone else?
Diane Penzera, 112 County District. Good evening. Most of you know me as I taught for eighteen years in the district, retired in 2015. While I have disagreed with some of the board's decisions in the past, especially in contract negotiations, I have always respected their commitment to the students and the community until now. I am appalled that the Greater Latrobe School Board is suing the Westmore County Tax Assessment Board and the Cabaret Theater Incorporated, seeking to have the board reverse its decision, granting exemption to the property located at 227 Main Street, Latrobe, Pennsylvania. The Cabaret Theater Incorporated is a 501(c)(3) corporation, and it meets every requirement for federal, state, and local tax exemption. Based my understanding, the school board is challenging the use of the Cabaret's property at 227 Main Street, Latrobe, on the grounds that it is not a purely public charity. I further understand that the school board wants to keep that property on the tax rolls because it believes that the building is not being utilized for legitimate charitable purposes. While no theater productions have been staged there yet, as the theater company continues to improve and upgrade the structure for public access, the building is in constant use, as the home of the Cabaret's set building, costume construction, and all other preparatory work used in mounting theater productions. Since purchasing the building in August 2015, the Cabaret Theater Company has staged plays in various Latrobe locations. The entire 2016 season was produced at the Latrobe Arts Center. Additional productions have been staged at Huber Hall and at the Latrobe United Methodist Church, where the Cabaret Theater's Neighborhood Arts True Homeschool Division continues to meet for classes and produce its two annual shows. This upcoming Labor Day weekend, the Cabaret Theater will present the thirteen actors company and its production of full bloom at the old main theater at 350 Main Street, Latrobe. This production is funded by the Pennsylvania Council for the Arts. All of these endeavors have required the Cabaret Theater building at 227 Main Street. As the school board and school district dedicate to the arts, you should be aware that the Cabaret Theater donated its time, technical expertise, and staff when the Greater Latrobe High School Theater Department requested emergency assistance in order to remedy the difficulties of the rented Titanic set. Members of the Cabaret helped to complete the build, supervised the operation of the set, and dismantled the set in a late-night endeavor to meet the time constraints of shipping. Volunteering time, too, and sharing knowledge with our students emphasizes the purely charitable nature of the Cabaret Theater Company. Additionally, in 2016, the Cabaret Theater produced Confessions of Lost Girls, an original drama written by students of the Chemist School of Adelfoye House, which is the result of an acting class offered by artistic director John Carousel to students. This, too, was a donation to the community. To add insult to injury, the Greater Latrobe School Board, instituting this lawsuit as a response to the Cabaret Theater's request for tax forgiveness, has triggered action that has placed the Cabaret Theater's building at 227 Main Street on the list of properties available for tax sale. I am incensed that the school board would take such action. The Cabaret brings the Latrobe community local entertainment, gives Latrobe citizens of all ages the opportunity to be involved in worthwhile artistic endeavors, both on and off the stage, provides young people with a creative outlet and a valuable learning experience, and will engender more traffic to downtown businesses. Given that the Cabaret Theater uses its building as the base of operations for its productions, maintaining that it is not using the building is demonstrably false and misleading to taxpayers. In addition, the generous contributions of time and expertise the company has made to the community and the school district thus far indicates that the Cabaret Theater operates as a purely charitable 501(c)(3) corporation, and its property at 227 Main Street enables it to do so. I believe that the school board needs to rethink its decision and support rather than attempt to destroy the Cabaret Theater. Thank you.
Diane, I'd like to respond, because a lot of the decisions that were made here are purely legal decisions and regulations to the board. And I want to explain a couple of things that were kind of misleading in prior news articles and the position the board's taking. When that property was purchased, it had originally been appraised, I believe, in fair market value, somewhere about three hundred and twenty-five or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The purchase was just for a fraction of that. And before anything was done, before any decisions were made on the evidence of purity and public charity, we encouraged, we explained, and literally, between the tax bureau and us, we begged the owner at this point to say, look, this property's appraised at fair market value of, I'm not quite sure what it is, but it was three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and fifty thousand, and you purchased it for thirty-five thousand. At least go in and get an appeal to get the value of the property lower to essentially what you paid for it, if that is true. And had that been done a few years ago, there probably would have been, I'm guessing, five to ten thousand dollars saved, but that was never done. And part of the problem is just that we can't get through the owner on that point. In other words, what we're saying is, yes, we have a disagreement with you about whether you're purely public charity. I'm going to address that. But in the meantime, you only paid a little bit, you only paid a fraction for this piece of property. Please, just go in and give it an appraise based on what you paid, and then we can deal with the purely public charity. To date, that's never been done. And then ultimately, we challenged the purely public charity, because there is a very strict six-part test established by the Supreme Court. If you don't mind, I'm going to look at my notes, because I can... If you don't mind, I'm going to look at my notes because I can't remember the whole thing, but I thought we might figure this out. And truly, what we can look at when we make a decision is only what's presented at the time to the board, to the Tax Assessment Bureau. The test is the following. Being a 501(c)(3) in and of itself doesn't accomplish anything toward that test. The Supreme Court of Pennsylvania sets its own test, number one. You must advance charitable purpose. You must donate or render gratuitously a substantial portion of services, benefit a substantial indefinite class of people who are legitimate subjects of charity, leave the government of some of its burden, and operate free of a private motive. Now, some of things that have been going on over the last year show charitable purpose, but beyond that, other parts of the test haven't been met, and we don't have anything. There's been, you know, no financials. We don't know who gets what, who gets to see something free, who gets discounts, there are absolutely no tax returns, no financials, no nothing. And so, we're in a situation where we will always review this, like you've asked, we will always review it, but somebody moving into a building and saying, "Here's my intention, here's what I hope to do," doesn't cut. And for the people that, you know, the businesses, who are the taxpayers, we simply can't say, "Oh, we trust your good intentions, you don't have to pay taxes." And the sad thing here is, if the property owner had only listened to the Tax Assessment Bureau, the solicitor for the county sat down and explained to him, "Look, just, you know, just a couple of years ago, just file for a reduction, the way you would with your house, and we'll sort this out later," and it just never happened. So, we are always open to reviewing this, and, you know, I would hope that you're not critical of the board, it was really the board following the solicitor's decision. We had a very limited time period, we had to file an appeal, they want to sue, we just filed an appeal. And obviously, as time goes on in the appeal, if they can provide us with this information, sure, the board will take another look at it. But at the time that the appeal was due, there simply wasn't enough information to meet the six-part test. So, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, but, you know, this isn't up for tax sale because of us. He had been turned down, I believe, two, if not three years, and each time they asked him to file for a reassessment based on value, and he didn't. And that's why he's facing a tax bill. His taxes would have gone down 75% if he had just filed for a reduction.
So what you're saying is that they need to file for a reassessment?
Well, right now-
And then make that information available to you.
Well, right now, we are appealing, they've been approved this last time through as purely public charity, we're appealing that, but we will always continue to look at any information they have, and we will certainly reassess our position. We have a deadline that we have to do, and to be honest with you, the time and the deadline, you know, I mean, in their overview, all that they provided at the time when they filed their appeal, all that they provided was sort of a long resume of what Mr. Coach Sully had done in the past. And then they said what they hoped to do, and they were putting in for a liquor license. And we're looking at this and saying, "I'm just not seeing that it's needing a six-part test." And it's only fair to the other taxpayers. But if he had just asked for a reduction a couple of years ago, I don't think he'd be in this position. That's just my opinion, but I think it's true. We will continue to reassess, we will continue to look at it, and obviously, if we think that he's providing the information to the test, I'll advise the board. So, the more information we get, the better.
That information has to go to you?
Well, yes, I mean, if that would be the easiest way to do it, doesn't, I mean, technically, it would go into the discovery process, but anything that's given to me, we'd be happy to reassess it.
So verifying that they need those six points to establish themselves as a charity?
Right.
Not problematic?
See, and the problem we have is, I mean, the big problem we have, a lot of times, you know, you'll look at a summer camp that wants to be a charity, and then they come in, like, they'll come into court and they'll say, "Look, here's, we brought in a million dollars, but we gave, we gave $700,000 further free dollar value to people that used the camp or couldn't afford it. We, you know, here was our, here was our tax returns, and as you can see, 40 to 50 to 60% of what we did was charity. We don't have anything to look at, just, he puts on a couple of plays, and that's good, that shows something that it really doesn't get through the, it really doesn't get through the press. So we're not trying to be harsh on him, certainly this board, if you want to blame somebody, blame the solicitor. As we used to do in, as we used to do in the old days.
See, on tax returns for the last few years?
Maybe on tax returns, I mean, he didn't submit any, you know, the financials, things like that. So, if anything, we'll be glad to look at it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hi. Tammy Bailey, Urban Avenue, Latrobe. First, I want to congratulate the Greater Latrobe School District for being number one in Westmoreland County as the school to be, going to. I saw that in the paper, and it was really exciting to see that, that it takes a lot of dedication from the board, a lot of dedication from the teachers, down to even some of the parents, and to the principals of all the schools, to make that possible, to be the place to want to live to. I was not able to attend the June meeting, and I believe you guys were out of session for July, so I am here, and I hate to bring up past things of what I want to speak about for something that should have been maybe talked about in June. And what I want to bring up is, my son, my oldest one is going in the seventh grade junior high, and my youngest is going into fourth grade. So my oldest left Latrobe Elementary this year as a sixth grader. On Tuesday, May 29th, they held an assembly to give out awards and certificates to the students of the sixth graders. Some of those awards were most jump ropes, most curls, who can throw the ball the farthest, who can get the most baskets in, who can run the fastest, county courts, county band, guitar club, student council, cleanest cabinet, can, it lists goes on for those awards. Three awards were given out for the academic superintendent awards. And from what I was told, this takes into account advanced PSSA scores in grades three to fifth, in addition to the GPA. My son Jared has been in the gold program since second grade, he is considered gifted. While in third grade, he moved up to the fourth grade math class. In fourth grade, he was the only student to score a perfect score on his math PSSAs. While he was in school, he participated in band choir in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. He was in guitar club in the fifth grade, only because he got the sixth grade flyer, and he signed up for it when it was only meant to be for sixth graders, but they allowed him to do it. In sixth grade, he took the junior high bus and started his day earlier than his normal peers, and attended seventh grade math class here at the junior high, and then trucked back to the L E S to finish off the rest of his school day and have a full school day. My son has received straight A's for all his years, and he did not receive one academic award. My son was crushed when he came home that day. I expected at least an academic, he's not sportsy. He does sports, but he is not a jogger. I guess, yeah, that's a term you said, he's not a jogger. He strived to be the best, he strived for A's all his life, that was something that he knew he was good at, and he did not receive one academic award because he received a proficient on his English Language Arts PSSA in third grade. And the only reason why he took that PSSA, because I wanted to opt him out of it, was because he wanted to see how well he can do on his PSSAs. He wanted to see how smart he was. Now, I spoke to Mrs. Holler, and she gave me wonderful words to give to Jared, and I appreciate those words. But there was a lot of students that were straight A students that may have not done very well on the PSSAs, especially for third grade. And for my son to be overlooked for the accomplishments that he had, being the only peer to even go to junior high in the morning, to not even be recognized for academics. PSSA is an individual student score that can be used to assist teachers in identifying students who may be in need of additional opportunities. And the school's board provides information to the schools and districts for curriculum and instruction improvements, discussion, and planning. PA teachers are evaluated on this, and it's tied to those scores. And to evaluate their students' strengths and weaknesses to increase student achievement scores, and that was coming from, straight from the PSSA website. From my understanding, PSSA scores are not to be held against a student for their academics, it's always supposed to help the school help them improve. And to tie a PSSA score, especially a third grade score, to the academics that my son proved that he had, being a straight A student, is very sad. And when his peers come up to him and say, "Jared, why didn't you get an award? You're the smartest kid in our class." My son's sitting there saying, "I don't know." So I want you to reconsider, when you think about these awards that you give out, the superintendent award, not to include those PSSA scores, because that kid could have been sick that week, and may just not have tested well, especially third grade. So, I'm not here for pity, but I just wanted to make you aware of what that does to somebody, especially a Jared out there, who may not be sports, but strives for academic greatness. And for Latrobe, we've just proved, we have academic greatness, and we need to lift those students up. Thank you.
I would just comment that after last year, we had three students at L E S, I think we had three at Mountain View-
I can't hear you.
Two. We had three at Mountain View, two, three students that were recognized with the academic award, and two at Bagley. And as you can well aware by Mrs. Bailey's comment, clearly, we have far more students who are academically strong. So at that time, we had discussed, looking at those requirements, to receive that award, and discuss, maybe reviewing and modifying those qualifications. So I appreciate your comments, and clearly, it is something that we discussed last year after the awards were given out. So, thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Jeffrey Feumey, 258 Grandview, Girard, Union Township. I see Mr. Yanity left, but I too, like Mr. Yanity, have a son entering first grade at Mountain View. And I was wondering if you have a number of withdrawals from kindergarten class to first grade class that were warrant reducing teachers down from four teachers to three teachers in first grade class?
I'm not sure that I understand what you're asking, but I don't know the withdrawals.
There was four, four classes-
Yes.
-of kindergarten students that are now reduced into three classes. So was there a significant number of withdrawals?
No.
So-
It wasn't. It was a, it was a matter of sitting down and talking to the principal, who was comfortable with going with 25.
25. I believe you stated 77 people?
Seventy-seven.
So you have 26, 26, and 25?
Twenty-three. That's what she said.
I also have a daughter entering third, or kindergarten, and I was wondering if you have the numbers for kindergarten classes?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. And what were the numbers last year?
Yeah, whatever is 77 divided by four, that's 19.
19.
I'll take Mr. Yanity's word for it.
Unfortunately, there's a man who left, so I can't ask him. Okay, thank you for that.
Mr. Feumey, I understand, and I, again, I go back to what I said, we look at it every year. We look at what we can best utilize our staff, knowing we have a certain number, it ebbs and it flows. And I understand, I do understand your concern at 25. I've got 25 in some other spots here too. I have 27 in sixth grade. But as an administrative staff, we're comfortable with it.
I think the maturity level between sixth grade and first grade is a significant difference.
I have 25 in the first grade of Bagley too. And I get, again, I get what you're saying, but when we have a conversation as an administrative team, we're comfortable looking forward with that number.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I would say the same thing to you that I said to Mr. Yanity, if you have specific concerns about your child, I don't think you've spoken in this, tell us about class size, I would encourage you to do so, because she's on the front line every day, and she can help to talk to you about the resources that we have.
Oh, sweet Lord.
But again, I would encourage you to go to her, because she's there every day and have that conversation, okay?
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Question for you, Mr. Nichols. Does the board take minutes at your executive sessions? I believe you would have asked that question, and you did not, and that's right.
No.
You did not. Are you required to?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Nichols, last one question. Can I present you with your, the school district's website paper that's sitting right there?
Yes, sir.
Can I approach it? I mean, this is, this is, thank you, sir. This is the school district's website, and it says you have to take minutes and release them when the need for non-intent, well, non-intent, I mean, I can't, is no longer needed. That's your website. So, we need to start taking minutes. Please don't change the website before I get high, because that's the only call I have.
Hi, I'm Kathy Sarath, 1332 Drive, Union Township. I will tell you that I spent several days this week literally writing out a presentation for you because I don't know that there's been anything more important I've done recently. Unfortunately, after I got here tonight, and I heard a few presentations, I no longer feel that what I wrote is applicable. And so, as I tend to do when I speak, rather than write, I will ramble, so you have my apologies in advance. I also know Mr. Nichols well enough to know he'll set me off the podium, so I'll try to, I'll try to wrap it up. I came here thinking I was going to defend the building of the new L E S, because I admit to being sucked into social media. I'm a Facebook fan, I have a small number of very loyal friends who I check on every day. And around the neighborhood, I heard about a couple of social media sites that are spending a great deal of time tearing up the good name of Greater Latrobe School District. I came to Greater Latrobe in, well, we did Latrobe area in 1984, started educating kids here in 1989, and my baby just graduated in 2017. So you can imagine that I saw some changes in Greater Latrobe over those years. It's a significant number of years to have kids in the district. I came through times when we had members of the board who felt their entire service to the community and service to the board was to do nothing other than to say, "We will not spend money, we will not raise taxes, period, I don't care what you need, end of discussion." And I'm here to represent one unhealthy attitude, that is, for the life of a school district, for the life of a community, and for the homeowners who are invested in the community. Whether you have children in the schools or you don't, we had a time when our physical plants were barely functional, whenever we were trying to take circles and turn them into classrooms, which meant we had pot-shaped wedges, which meant we had no air conditioning, no heat, and a lot of noise, it was not functional. And yet, we had board members who refused to consider a spending plan that would raise taxes and die. We had members of the board who, literally, I heard these words in my own ears, and 20-plus years, maybe 30 years later, I cannot believe I heard these words from a school director who said, "If we are not required to provide advanced science and math, why should we?" Now imagine if we had listened to that plan back in, what would it have been, about 1990-something? And we had not pursued advanced sciences and math at Greater Latrobe, and we had provided only the basics required by the state, where we would stand as a school district today? The education provided is here, is beyond the- The education provided is here, is beyond approach, I can't thank you enough for what you've done for my children, um, and every taxpayer in the Greater Latrobe School District should thank you. The goulash and gibberish that is passed around saying that taxes are being raised without consideration, that money is being spent frivolously, is purely ridiculous. We all know it, you know it, everyone here knows it. Every spending plan is discussed, every dime is debated, they squeeze every nickel till there's nothing left, and you're wrong if you believe otherwise. Everything that's been presented here tonight has been hearsay, what I heard in the parking lot, what I heard at the bar, what I overheard someone saying. We need to deal in facts, not gossip. And the facts are, Greater Latrobe is not a high-ta, tax district. We are a third from the bottom out of seventeen districts in Westmoreland County.
The board knows.
The board knows, but you address people by name, and when you start addressing people by name, then you're gonna get it right back from Mrs. Saraf.
Good for you.
Because you don't have the right to tear down the good name of a hard-working administrator, and I don't appreciate seeing on social media a school board member who chooses to support what you know is untrue, what you know is gossip. You know better than to make problems out of nothing, but you're choosing to do it for the sake of your own personal upset and your own personal vendettas. And I don't intend to call you out tonight, but what I've seen here tonight leads me to believe that I must. So, the facts are, we are not overtaxed. The facts are that this district is presenting an honorable education, a highly ranked education, the students leaving here are prepared and being accepted to the best, to the, to the highest level districts, the highest level colleges that they are applying to.
Mrs. Saraf, I'm sorry, I'm trying to-
I'm done? Oh, I'm sorry, give that thirty-second warning.
I was trying to give it to you.
I was a little upset as I was afraid I would-
Sorry.
Thank you for your service to the district, to our children, and to our community, and Mike, I'd love to meet with you personally, because I've known you for a long time.
Sit down.
I'm sorry.
Not today, but I will.
Come, you know where, come over. Over me.
I'd like to say something as a board member. Back when I first got elected to this board, I came to meetings because my kids were being impacted by the lack of forward thinking and lack of taking care of our school districts. And I was told by a school director that I am a doctor, and I make lots of money, so why don't you take your kids and put them in a private school? That's what the guy said to me. Said, "If you don't like it, get out." So, I said, "Sir, I will see you on the school board." So, I ran to school, that's why I ran to school, because I was sick and tired of people that didn't think about their own agenda, instilling what we could do to help our community. That's why I came on this board. I've been on this board a long time, as have some of our members here, and I can tell you that when people stand here and tell us that we're unethical or lying, that really pisses me off. I don't, I could be called a liar by anybody. I don't lie to people, ever.
You aren't here, Jim.
Don't lie to me.
So, you-
I'm not listening to you talking.
Sit down.
You aren't here.
Sit down, or leave.
I don't care where I was, I've been on this board for twenty years, and I know what has happened.
Well, one person telling me that-
And I wanted, I wanted to-
Sit down, or get out.
Please tell us who you think should resign, that's what I want to know, because you wrote in the newspaper, and you said, "There are board members who should resign because they're on this board for the wrong reasons." I would like to know who you think should do that, because I think that's a ridiculous comment. These people here are volunteering their time, and they don't have an agenda, they want to help our school district move forward and do the best for the children, that's why we're here. We have administration that's doing the best, and we have disagreements, I frankly disagree with class size, and I've been there all the time, but, you know, this is a democracy, and we have nine people on the board, so we vote on our own. Everybody has input, everybody knows exactly where every dime is spent, I'm telling you that right now. My driveway hasn't been fixed in fifteen years, so you can look at anything you want to, I don't get money from the school board, nobody does. So, this is ridiculous for me to sit and listen to this stuff, I resent it. I'm not going to be sitting here and be called a liar, I'm not going to be sitting here and be called unethical. I think that's bullshit, and I'm not going to put up with it. If you think I'm a liar, you tell it to my face, I'm not going to listen to it. We do a service for this community, we work hard for this community, we put lots of hours into this school board to help this community, and that's what I'm going to continue to do, because I believe that we owe our children the best that we can give them, and that's why I'm continuing to be on this board.
I'd like to echo the words of Dr. Zorch. My, my concern is that in the article, it said several board members need to resign, and without knowing who that is, it puts a shadow of doubt on every one of us. So, if there's something I have done, I'd like to know what it is I've done that warrants that I should resign, or anyone else for that matter, because without any names being named, every one of us is under suspicion, even if we're innocent, and that makes the community think that every one of us who's sitting here has done something wrong. And so, if we have, and, and Mike, if you, if you feel we have any, then let's, let's get it out tonight, let's do it.
One applause, Mike.
Well, you know what, there was a lack of transparency in an executive session meeting. You know, we, we got out of an executive session meeting, went back in, we went into a public meeting, and we made everything look rosy with the new school. We had no right to do that. We know better, and we're better than that, and that's why I made the comments I did. So, if you have problems with that, so be it. I'm not going to change, I'm going to be the same way I am, and that's the way that it is.
But Mike, I-
Mrs. Saraf, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you, believe me, I have known you a long time.
You have known me a long time, we've been on the same side of a number of issues, but when I see what's going on, tearing down the name of strong, hard-working individuals, I can't sit back and allow it. So, you and I, I have all kinds of time for you, Mike, and we'll talk it out, and you know what, I think that, that we should all be able to look in the mirror and be proud of what we said, and I'm not sure that you wouldn't be able to do that with some of the things that you've said publicly in recent, in recent weeks. And I, I'm ready when you are, tell me when you're free, and I'll be glad to be-
Absolutely.
Thank you.
But I, I still want to go back to the transparency. We're, we're, I keep hearing this, let's be transparent. I'm sitting here, people are coming up to me and saying, "Hey, I, I hear one of the board members thinks that, uh, everybody should quit, should resign." Why? I can't answer that question. I don't know if you're talking about me, and if so, what it is I did that warrants to be resigned, or anyone else sitting here. And so, I, we're here, it's a public meeting, let's be transparent, is there something I have done as a member of this board that warrants that I should be resigned?
Yeah. I'm not going to say at this point.
Well, then, you're not being transparent.
I'll, I'll be transparent. You, you know what, you know who you are, I, I guess you never answered my question about transparency after the executive session meeting, and we went into a public meeting, and we sat here like a bunch of mushrooms, and we, we let George Dickerson give a presentation, Judy asked, asked a question, and we just sat there, and when we should have probably said, "Hey, we have some problems, the school is not going to open on time," but we didn't.
See, ma'am, I wasn't lying when I said that.
So, you know what, you can think what you want of me, and as I said, I'm not going to change.
Anyone else? Move for adoption, resolution number fifty.
Done.
Motion number forty-second, all in favor?
Aye.
I approve.